There you go.
Join.
Yeah.
Councilman Gary and our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our prayer. Thank you.
Eternal God, I pray to you, Lord, bless us and keep us. Make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. I pray we will feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. Give us discernment and insight to make decisions that please you. I pray this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for us in Guthrie, Oklahoma. Let our actions in this meeting reflect our desire to build a community that gives our citizens opportunity to live, grow, prosper, and edify one another. Amen.
Amen. May be seated. We call the order. Regular Guthrie City Council meeting, Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, 6:30 PM. City Hall Council Chambers, 101 North Second Street, Guthrie, Oklahoma, 73044.
We're gonna have you read it all.
It's on the sheet. It's on the sheet. It's gonna be a shorter meeting so I can put more detail in. Item number two is public comments, community announcements, and recognitions. To my knowledge, we don't have any. Okay, we have none. Item number three is the consent agenda. Items A through D. Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second if there's any, if we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, if done, cast your votes, please.
All votes are in.
All right, unanimous approval for the consent agenda, items A through D. Item number four, items removed from the consent agenda, there were none. Item number five, resolution number 2025-15, authorizing the purchase of property for airport purposes and approving the temporary transfer of funds. Mr. Faulkner?
Yes, Mayor and Council, as a part of the five-year CIP plan out at the airport, which we are all very familiar with, with our most recent joint meeting with the City of Edmond and the City of Guthrie City Councils, as well as the presentation from State Director of Aerospace and Aeronautics, Grayson Ardis, the purchasing property for future airport expansion. This resolution will authorize the purchase of the property as well as the transfer of funds from the city's general fund to GEDA. You do have a special meeting tonight for GEDA to authorize that purchase entitled "The Property As Such." I will note the total purchase price of the property is $951,000, of which $903,000 is reimbursable through the FAA and the ODA. Airport Board, recommended approval, unanimous approval, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So that puts it around $48,000 an acre, something like that?
It is 46, I believe, is, yes. It's 19.85 acres.
Eddie, when was that Airport Board vote? Was it the?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday? So moved? Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? There are none. Please cast your votes.
All votes are in.
All right, unanimous approval for resolution number 2025-15, the authorization of the purchase of property for airport purposes and approving the temporary transfer of funds. Item number six, City Managers' Report.
Yes, Mayor and Council, lots of festivities going on in the city. I don't know if you've noticed, we're back into that festival season. Great events last week, I believe Oktoberfest. The first Oktoberfest took place on Harrison. Looked like a great crowd out there. Even had their own maze that they created out of some hay bales. So where did these hay bales come from? They were in the middle of the street. So looked like well attended. Going to continue that this week with the first Guthrie Con, which will take place on West Harrison on Friday, and then East and West Harrison Saturday and Sunday. So be on the lookout for all the fun events that are taking place. In addition to that, Final Rebrick Nights will take place on November 1st. Transitioning to infrastructure updates, the Cottonwood Water Main Project is complete as of last week. It is back in service, so we're happy to see that emergency from May finally complete after lots of negotiations and back and forth with the railroad inspectors permitting. So happy to see that back in operation. The mineral well splash pad is closed as of last week. You'll remember, we left it open. Traditionally, it's a Memorial Day to Labor Day season. Excuse me. With the water main issue this year, we were unable to open the Banner Park splash pad. So we left mineral wells open a little longer because the weather was nice and would support it and allow the community to have that amenity as long as the weather permitted. So it has been closed. Now we've got the cold weather moving in, so we're preparing for that side of things. In addition to that, crews have finished up some split rail fencing installation out at Guthrie Lake to isolate the camping spaces. Got six spaces there. Really looks nice coming along, coming along well. So with that, Mayor, that's all I've got for you.
Thank you, Eddie. Item number seven, request comments from members of City Council. Councilman Williams?
Yes, speaking of community events, the Bluegrass Festival, I was speaking with Jeff Flurry, who has done security down there for many years, and he was relaying a message to me, which he concurd from Susan Tate, that it looked better than ever before in the bottom there. And she wanted to express her thanks to tennymaker. She named specifically James Howe, Kevin Dixon, and their crews. Just did a fantastic job and just above and beyond.
Awesome. We'll pass that along.
Went very well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Denning?
I don't think I have anything. Thank you.
You sure?
Jeff was trying to help me get my computer here to stay on, but I think I'm gonna let my daughters do that.
That's a kid thing.
I'm barely functioning.
I heard Jeff say that was simple.
It was. I think you just take it and shake it and then it'll work better.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Staff, there's not a lot of you here tonight. Thank you. And Eddie, thank you. I've been out, saw everything at the lake. I thought it was kind of fantastic. They've gone and put some of that blacktop, I guess they grind it up and then roll it and put it out there. It looked good on that, too. So that's gonna look outstanding. And other than that, thank you guys. That's it.
Councilman Gary? Nothing, thank you. Councilman Faulkner?
Nothing this evening.
Councilwoman Gibbs?
Tomorrow is the Chamber of Commerce Call Tournament. I'm sure some are participating in. I look forward to seeing everyone there that can make it out. First, it will tee off after Chamber Coffee. Out there, sit around. Thank you.
As for me, just keep in mind that the Pollard Theater still has their seasonal play going on right now for Halloween. I'll be going to that here before it ends this week, before they switch over to obviously A Christmas Carol. Guthrie Haunts is rocking and rolling. They should have a big crowd Friday and Saturday, so remember to get out to that. I think they even do it a week or two after Halloween because it's so popular. So and they don't just have the spook house, they have like a carnival going on outside. So if you don't want to go and go through the actual spook walk, which is like 45 minutes, they have a lot of festivities going on outside, so make sure to check that out. Really happy to see, you know, we have the intersection open over on Winston, Oklahoma, the way I don't have to drive two miles around to go to Boomerang. I'm being, I'm overexaggerating. It was okay. Glad to do it. It looks great. Thank you, guys, for orchestrating that. It looks good. Park at Park looks great, too. It's like an extension of kind of what we already have there. Looks really good. So other than that, that's all that I have.
Real quick, guys, they're not putting the stoplights back up, so quit calling me. Stop signs are, they're gonna stay there. There's not that much traffic on that road. We've had things taken there. So anyway.
Something I will add to that, I've received a call today in regards to the traffic light there. The Street Committee reviewed that last winter and took that under consideration. And what we found is that the traffic count there, that is the only intersection, not on Division or Noble, that was signalized. And so it was actually impeding traffic more than it was assisting with the flow of traffic. So either direction, you go off of Division or Noble, there's no traffic signals. So it's not unusual in the city limits for that to be the case. So we didn't just come to that decision.
We should put a roundabout there.
That'll really make them happy. They're calling me now. Just wait till we do that.
Okay, all right. Well, we have something to look forward to. All right, well, that's all that I have. Item number eight, proposed executive session pursuant to the authority of Title 25 OS 307 as follows. Your Honor, I move that we convene an executive session pursuant to Title 25 of the Oklahoma Statute, Section 307, for the purposes of discussing the negotiations concerning employees represented at the Paternal Order of Police Lodge Number 105, under Section 30B2. Section 307B1, for the purposes of discussing the hiring, employment, promotion, disqualification, or resignation of a city-employed city attorney, or Section 307B1, for the purposes of discussing the employment, hiring, employment, promotion, disqualification, or resignation of a public employee, the municipal judge. Can you read it again?
You made a motion, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. unanimous approval to go into executive session.
Clark, stand by.